Now, six thirty. September seventeenth, four thirty. We're going to start with proclamation for Constitution Week, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, everyone. Can everybody hear us? Okay, we're in the section. Can everybody else hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, we are September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. The Constitution Convention. And we officially recognize this magnificent and we officially recognize this deep gathering celebration. And so the line to the event is called law. Five, nine, one, five. It's our guarantee of the proclamation each year by President of the United States of America. December seventeenth, the third, with one third as Constitution Week. Now, there's our idea of Southgate and Duke. To declare September seventeenth, the twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas, the freedoms, and constitutions we had in seventeen eighty-seven. By encouraging protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this garden of honorities. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Did you remember the official reports, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you again. Well, after years of promises, the pathway from Gateway Subdivision to Garrish School was originally approved to be resurfaced by the Southgate School Board in June. The decision was reversed in July with the belief that the pathway was not being utilized. City Clerk Dan Friends and Councilwoman Karen George, who lived in that subdivision, knew that that was an incorrect assumption. This connector pathway is continuously used by walkers, joggers, and those biking through the city. The pathway was worth saving. So several elected officials joined me in attending the August and September school board meetings to express our concerns and support for the pathway. Those individuals included Clerk Friends, Council President Tilly Kuspa, council members Karen George, Ed Golic, and Victoria Erich. Thankfully, at the September ninth meeting, the board returned to their original scene and funded the replacement of the pathway as part of the Garrish Capital Improvement Plan. As elected officials, we see the value and walkability within our community. And the Garrish path was a small but important piece of that vision to attract and maintain residents to our great city. Special thanks to Superintendent Sharon Irvine and board members who supported this important community asset. This past Saturday, I was very pleased to attend the rededication and living committee for the newly remodeled Deaconess Tower. Originally built in nineteen eighty-two by the leadership of the congregation of St. George Church, the remodel took me three years to complete. The results are really striking magnificent. All one hundred and fifty units were gutted and received new kitchens and baths. The new community room, exercise area, beauty shop, and glorious chapel dedicated to Saint Cosmos was also added. President Lou Kirkos, president of the Deaconess Tower Board, led the remodel effort. He is a remarkable man who spent countless hours volunteering to make this project come to fruition. Joining me at the rededication were Council President Tilly Kuspa and Councilwoman Karen George. The highlight of the event was the blessing of the beautiful chapel by several members of the Greek Orthodox Church, including Father Karamanos, the current pastor, also Father John, and the translator of the metropolis of Detroit, Theodore Petruco. This renovation was very well received by the seniors who resided in the Deaconess Tower and was present at that celebration. Many communities struggle with providing affordable housing for their senior citizens. This project has certainly gone far above most senior housing. Congratulations to the residents and the leadership and congregation of the St. George Greek Orthodox Church. This year's collective service will take place on Thursday, October sixteenth, from six thirty to eight P. M. We started this event last year as a way of thanking our citizen volunteers who served on our various city commissions and boards. This year's salute will feature the artwork of former council member Teresa Lanning. Teresa is an avid artist and worked in several mediums, from oil painting to stone carvings. The evening will also include the live music of Old Baby and Bitumen and refreshments that will be provided by Delapsity and Crystal Gardens. This was a great celebration last year and we look forward to again recognizing all of the city volunteers at this year's event. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
No report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Erich.
So the parks and rec committee met last week and the biggest note to take was that the Miracle League Field has a bidding which we'll talk about here in a little bit on the agenda as far as getting phase one done of the Miracle Field, which would incorporate partially a grant. So I'll leave that for that later on in the meeting. But I also had a water board meeting. And just a couple of quick notes there. So the water main relining project from Shaffer Court until past Mexican Gardens will go out to bed soon before winter hits. The water main will be located at the bank tower due to installation of a new pedestrian bridge. And then this fall, every fire hydrant will be what they call pumped down and caps our breeze so that all firefighters can use it easily. And then our next meeting will be Tuesday, December second, at four thirty.
Thank you. Councilwoman Erich.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My commission met last week, but unfortunately I was on vacation. So Karen's going to give the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Erich.
No report.
The school board did meet, but as we know, there's some history. The Garrish walkway, they did approve that. That was the meeting they talked about there. It's going to be a great asset for both the school community and also the residents around that neighborhood. And then public safety is scheduled for today, but it got canceled, so I'll put her out next month. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did attend the Red Day Commission meeting last week. They had the largest summer reading program with over seven hundred signed up for both the children's games and adult reading programs. The long-awaited furniture has arrived. You'll see new shelving, encirculation desks, tables and chairs, study corrals, and more. Fall activities schedule is already out. There are a lot of events for everybody. Check the website for exact dates and times as events may change. The large break beneath home is now a designated B-line. Also, the commission did want to approve some policy and procedure changes. And we will be voting on them later on on the agenda. The Cultural Arts and Special Events Commission met last night. They had an election of offices. Robin Craig is the chair, Cindy Burley co-chair, Hanny Allison, the recording secretary, Nancy Groth, the correspondent secretary. And thank you, ladies, for taking on these positions. The case commission, which is Cultural Arts and Special Events, will be participating in the Oktoberfest Saturday, October fourth, from ten to three at Market Center Park. Again, they will be sponsoring the Halloween decorating contest. Orders will be accepted starting October twentieth to November first. And there will be first, second, and third prize winners who will receive gift cards and opposite line at the next meeting. The commission, I think, uh, meeting discussed their Halloween party, which will be held. I should say the luncheon. It will be held on Thursday, October twenty-third. It's twenty dollars a person. The doors open at ten. There will be a raffle bested, door prizes shared with us. And there'll also be a Halloween decorating contest. And there will be, and this is for people, the costume contest. There will be three winners, a first place, second place, and third place. And they will receive gift cards. And ever properly, um, the date, date is done. And the day is well open at ten o'clock. It's twenty dollars if you want to register. Your lunch, not the luncheon, the Halloween luncheon. You can call Dick Kobalski at seven three four two five eight three zero six six. And again, it's October twenty-third, and the cost is ten dollars. Also, the Halloween tree will be held in rounds at the train park, Juana's Park, October seventeenth and nineteenth, from five P. M. to eight P. M. And I believe that's all I have for now, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Erich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The planning commission did meet on September eighth, the last Monday. They had a public hearing for new business. T and G Downriver Incorporated for conditional youth review at one three seven six zero Ewika Road. They want to renovate the existing building to be used as a family-style dining restaurant. The applicant stated they request one to renovate it. And they're talking with the contractors for the project. And we will have revised plans for the next meeting. So we, they deferred it, the planning commission deferred for the next meeting. We would expect for the applicant to have some revised plans. They also talked about the master plan that we plan to take up again in our next meeting to try to finalize that and get that out for our review. I also wanted to state that Middle East had their grand opening this past weekend. It was great. They had nine five five out there, great music. They were offering five-dollar swanmobiles, which are delicious and could be two meals. Highly recommended. A walking distance from my house. Great people. Also, just so that people know, that Amido Street Tacos at one four one five six is open. They did not have a grand opening, but the plan was abandoned for so long that people don't realize that it's open. So just give them a, support some local businesses out here and give them a shot. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Erich.
No, you're not the chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, please, for the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Today, we have one item under consideration of bids, and that's for the landscaping work associated with the city hall parking redesign. The city received three bids, and the administration's recommending Dan K's to be awarded as they provided a low bid. The project includes all plant materials, labor, and a two-year guarantee on plant materials. Councilman Golic had reached out just before the meeting today. And I just wanted to make sure it's clear that the, that two-year guarantee, if any plant die in the first two years, those plants will be replaced at no cost for the city. So the installation is going to take place later this fall. Are there any questions from council on this item? Next, under scheduled hearings, we have three. The first is regarding one five through six one Flanders. The administration's requested that this item, that the public hearing be opened and then adjourned until October first to ensure that property notification is given to the resident and also that the potential property buyers can be present if they wish. This property is for sale. The apartment's been contacted by a number of buyers who are interested in purchasing the property. And so in order to make sure that we have anyone that wants to be here would like to move it to October first. Are there any questions from council on that item? The next two public hearings are for homes on Edison that were damaged during the April house explosion. I'm pleased to say that both property owners, since we have requested the public hearing dates, they are in compliance with the Dangerous Buildings Board's order. So the properties have been demolished. The one house that was partially damaged, or it was totally damaged, but it was caught on fire just to the east, that house has come down. The damaged garage at the house that had the explosion, that garage is down. And the property owners are in compliance. So therefore, we're recommending that, that these public hearings actually be removed from the agenda prior to the, prior to the agenda being approved tonight. Are there any questions from council on this item, on those two items? Okay, seeing none. The first item under communication to A is regarding one five three six one Flanders. Again, we'd asked that this item be placed in the October first agenda, and no action taken tonight. The next is the appointment for Ray Gribchinsky to the BZA for a term expired in December twenty twenty-five. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the passing of Gary Martin. Any questions from council on this item? The next item is a budget amendment. It's number twenty twenty-six dash oh one. At the end of the last fiscal year, the library had forty-nine thousand dollars unspent funds for furniture and equipment. Those funds went back to the fund balance for the library. The proposed budget amendment would reallocate those funds for furniture and equipment for the current fiscal year. This amendment will cover the costs of some of the items that were approved and purchased last year but being delivered this year. Are there any questions from council on this item? Okay, the next, the next is the request to extend the contract with Lim Walkers Tree and Snow Tree Trimming Services. They were the low bidder in twenty twenty-two, and they've maintained their pricing since that time. This proposed extension would maintain the current rates until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. Any questions on this item? Seeing none, the next, the next item is a request to waive the bid and purchase electronic pool of laptops using the election budget. While the city is requesting a very hard bid process, these laptops are available under the State of Michigan and ideal contract. Any questions regarding the laptop purchase? Okay, next is a request for carpet replacement at the library. While we're asking to waive the bid, the library director did contact four local carpet companies. Two, two of those companies provided quotes to the city. And we're recommending that J-Bro Carpet be selected as the vendor because they provided the latest quote. Are there any questions from council on this item?
I just, Madam Chair. Councilwoman George. I'd just like to make a comment. The carpet that's in there now is thirteen years old. And it's, there's no replacement tiles that are available. And the pattern is out of production. The staff approved the new design. I had nothing to do with it.
Yeah, they should have run by it. The room gets a tremendous amount of use throughout the week, throughout the summer. It's just a lot of traffic in there, so getting updated carpet scores would be good for that space. Okay, the next item is a request to waive the bid and use the three council-approved electrical vendor, running electrical, perform electrical work associated with the Southgate Tower Park project. These coffers are covered under the Wayne County Arbo Graham. Any questions from council on this item?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Golic.
Just had a question about the lighting, which where it says it's an estimate or a quote. Is it actually a bid that is not going to exceed sixty-seven thousand dollars?
So yeah, that, I apologize about that. It's a good point. On the, in your bid packet, you'll see that it's listed as an estimate. This is really more of a quote. We don't expect to be charged less than sixty-seven thousand dollars. We do rule that, that's what we should expect with this price. There, uh, We do rule that, that what we should expect with this price. Their software, when it generates it, it just lists as an estimate, but it would be appropriate to say not to exceed $67,000 for this item.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is regarding the development of Downriver's first miracle field and park, which is exciting. This, the city was awarded $416,000 from a CDDG grant from Wayne County for this project. With that CDDG grant, the county is handling all the bidding and procurement for the project. Therefore, the administration's recommending that our bid process be waived and the project be awarded to the county's lowest qualified bidder, which is Premier Group Associates LLC. This miracle field and park is part of the Parks and Recreation Commission's five-year plan. It's been a dream for a long time. It was planned for it in this next five years of mill's money, and the Parks and Recreation Commission has recommended use of managed funds to pay for the, to pay for the city's portion of the project. Are there any questions from council on this item? Okay, last under communication A, are they update the library policy procedure manual? These changes specifically deal with the donation policy and for the new team rooms. These policies were reviewed, they approved by the library board, and they were recommended for council approval. No questions on that. We have one item under communication A, and that is the appointment of Ben Patton to the water boy for a term expiring April 2026 to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mike Woodford. Any questions from council? Seeing none, that's all. Thank you.
I have a quick question for the amendment to the agenda. Are we able to put it all in one motion to remove items two and three, and then also move?
Yeah.
All of them.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll be convening at 7 o'clock.
Super. Okay.
Now, September 11th, September 17th, regular meeting will begin. We'll start with the motion of the agents.
Will call Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Councilman Kessba.
Yes.
Councilman Glatziani.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Ralph.
Yes.
Councilman Eris Reese.
Yes.
Councilman Gallic.
Yes.
Councilman Irage.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to remove items two and three in scheduled hearings and move the first item, Communications A, to the October 1st meeting.
All right. Madam Chair. Oh. I make a motion that we remove items two and three from scheduled hearings and...
You said two and three, Erage.
Item one for Communications A to the next meeting.
Of course.
Good. Motion by Eris Reese, supported by Glatziani. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carried.
Sorry.
I am motion to approve the work study meeting minute for September 3rd, 2025. May I motion, Councilman George?
I move to accept the work study meeting minutes stated September 3rd, 2025. Support.
Motion by Eris, supported by Eris Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes stated September 3rd, 2025.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Eris Reese.
I make a motion that we approve the regular city council meeting minutes stated September 3rd, 2025. Support.
Motion by Eris, supported by Ralph. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. No scheduled persons in the audience. One item under consideration. The memo from the administrator regarding City Hall landscape materials and installation. Madam Clerk.
The administration has reviewed the above and concur with the city interim's recommendation to award the bid for City Hall landscape materials and installation to Dan Kays of Grozeal in the amount of $16,280. This bid award also includes two years of maintenance on all plant materials. Funds are available in the general fund under building repairs and maintenance for this purchase.
It's a pleasure, Council.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Gallic.
I make the motion to award the bid for City Hall landscape materials and installation, which includes two years of maintenance on all plant materials to Dan Kays Incorporated of Grozeal, Michigan, in the amount of $16,280.
Motion by Gallic, supported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One item under scheduled hearings now for the demolition of property 15631 Flanders. Madam Clerk, is there anything for the reading of this opening?
Call the public hearing.
Okay. Just offer the motion to open the scheduled hearing for demolition of property 15631 Flanders.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion to open the scheduled public hearing for the demolition of property 15631 Flanders.
Support. Motion by Ralph, supported by Eris Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? We'll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kessba.
Yes.
Councilman Irage.
Yes.
Councilman Gallic.
Yes.
Councilman Eris Reese.
Yes.
Councilman Ralph.
Yes.
Councilman Glatziani.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
It's now open. However, as we discuss the work study, just close it and reconvene at the next meeting on October 1st.
Adjourn to the specific date, yes. Adjourn to the specific date.
All right. I make a motion to...
October 1st.
On October 1st, 2025, the scheduled hearing of demolition of property 15631 Flanders.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion to close this public hearing. The scheduled hearing, build the property at 15631 Flanders, and move it to October 1st. Support.
Motion by Ralph, supported by Gallic. Any discussion or objection?
Did you say close or adjourn?
Adjourn.
October actually closed. We have to move to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Okay. Mayor does better than I do, right?
What was that? What was that? I think, uh, I make a motion that we...
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Adjourn, I'm sorry. At the demolition of 15631 Flanders, we move it to October 1st. Support.
I think there's a sound work in between.
Okay. I had a motion by Ralph, supported by Gallic. No discussion or objection. We'll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kessba.
Yeah.
Councilman Glatziani.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Eris Reese.
Yes.
Councilman Gallic.
Yes.
Councilman Irage.
Yes.
First item on Communications A, brought up from the mayor, running appointment to Board of Zoning Appeals. Madam Clerk, please be advised that I have made the following appointment to the Board of Appeals for a term expiring December 2025. Ray Kropczynski. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the passing of Gary Martin. What's a part of your counsel?
I am motion, Councilman George, I move that we concur with the appointment of Ray Kropczynski at 1362749 to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Support.
For a term expiring December 2025.
Okay, brother. Support.
Motion by George, supported by Ralph. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next, the word from the Finance Director and Fiscal Year 25-26 budget amendment number 2026.01. Madam Clerk.
Attached, please sign, proposed budget amendment number 2026-01 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. The attached report proposes an amendment to carry forward unspent monies from the previous fiscal year for the Southgate Veterans Memorial Library. These budgeted funds were approved for replacement of furniture and equipment at the library but not spent before year end and lapped back to fund balance. Amendments that are positive amounts represent increases to the adopted budget figures. And those who are negative amounts represent decreases to the adopted budget figures.
What's a part of your counsel?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Eris Reese.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed budget amendment number 2026-01 as detailed in the report.
Support. Motion by Eris, supported by Irage. Any discussion?
Madam Chair. I just want to say that the furniture was ordered, but it was not received until after the new budget year, which is why we're doing the amendment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next, the word from the mayor, running contract extension for tree trimming services. Madam Clerk.
I have reviewed the above and concur with the Finance Director's recommendation to approve the contract extension with Lynn Walker's Tree &amp; Snow of Avoca, Michigan through June 30th, 2027, at the rate approved under the original bid award. The contract was originally approved at the May 18th, 2022, city council meeting, and extended at the May 17th, 2023 city council meeting. Funds are available for this purchase in the general fund and street funds budget for this contract extension. Your favorable consideration of this matter is requested.
It's a pleasure, Council.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Ralph.
I make a motion to approve the contract extension for the tree trimming services with Lynn Walker's Tree &amp; Snow LLC through June 30th, 2027, at the rate scheduled approved on May 18th, 2022.
Support. Motion by Ralph, supported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next, the word from the mayor, running approval of election electronic poll book laptops. Madam Clerk.
I have reviewed the above and concur with the Finance Director's recommendation to waive the bid procedure and approve the purchase of six election electronic poll book laptops from CBWG of Chicago, Illinois in the amount of $4,252.86 under the state of Michigan MyDeal contract. Funds are available in the city clerk selection budget. Your favorable consideration of this matter is appreciated.
What's a part of your counsel?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Irage.
I move that we waive the city bid process and approve the purchase of six election electronic poll book laptops from CDWG in the amount of $4,252.86 under the state of Michigan MyDeal extended purchasing program.
Support. Motion by Irage, supported by Gallic. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next, the word from the mayor, running approval of library carpet replacement. Madam Clerk.
I have reviewed the above and concur with the Finance Director's recommendation to waive the bid procedure and approve the library carpet replacement quote from J. Bro Carpet One of Southgate in the amount of $16,006.35 for the carpet replacement in the Kieran and George conference room. Funds are available in the library budget. Your favorable consideration of this matter is appreciated.
What's a part of your counsel?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Ralph.
I make a motion to waive the city bid process and approve the quote from J. Bro Carpet One for the carpet replacement in the Kieran and George conference room in the amount of $16,006.35.
Support. Motion by Ralph, supported by Irage. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
As I stated during the starting session, the carpeting is 13 years old and no more replacement tiles are available in the pattern and solid production. The staff approved them in design. I had nothing to do with it.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair. Also, even though we did get the big profit for people that did catch the pre-reading, our library, they did take bids on it. So it's not like we just took one bid. We actually had other quotes on it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next, the word from the mayor, running electrical work for Southgate Tower Park Pavilion. Madam Clerk.
I have reviewed the above and concur with the Finance Director's recommendation to waive the bid procedure and approve the quote from Ryan Electric. The city's approved contractor in the amount of $67,000 for the electrical work associated with the Southgate Tower Park Pavilion project. Funds for this will be provided from the Wayne County ARPA grant. Your favorable consideration of this matter is appreciated.
What's a part of your counsel?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Gallic.
I make a motion that we waive the city bid process and approve the quote from Ryan Electric in an amount not to exceed $67,000 for the electrical work associated with the Southgate Tower Park Pavilion project, with funds to be provided from the Wayne County ARPA grant.
Support. Motion by Gallic, supported by Eris Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next, the word from the mayor, running on Southgate Miracle Park Phase One. Madam Clerk.
I have reviewed the above and concur with the Finance Director's recommendation to waive the bid procedure and award the bid for Southgate Miracle Park Phase One to Premier Group Associates LLC in the amount of $784,419.50 plus contingency in the amount of $41,281.50 for a total amount of $825,701. This project will be partially funded with the Wayne County CDBG grant in the amount of $416,000. As part of the grant, Wayne County performed the bidding process. The Parks and Recreation Commission recommends funding $410,000 from the Recreation Village Fund for the balance for the project. Your favorable consideration of this matter is appreciated.
What's a part of your counsel?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Irage.
I move that we waive the city bid process and award the bid for the Southgate Miracle Park Phase One project to Premier Group Associates LLC in the amount of $784,419.50 plus contingency in the amount of $41,281.50 for a total amount of $825,701, with funding of $416,000 provided by a Wayne County CDBG grant and $410,000 provided from the Recreation Village Fund.
Support. Motion...
Madam Chair.
Please.
Could we have a motion if we would that it did go through the Wayne County bidding process even though we're waiving our bid? If you could add that, I'd appreciate that. And then it would be more reflective of why we're selecting that contract.
Can I reread the portion or just...
Yeah, I can just refer to the fact that even though we're waiving our bid, it did go through Wayne County's process.
Okay. Everything I just stated plus... We got it. That the Wayne, that Wayne County has gone through the process and approved the amount.
Motion by Eris, supported by Ralph. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ray.
Again, I appreciate the unanimous support of this. Twelve years ago, I attended a game of the Downhill Panthers. And I don't know if any of you have attended that, that special needs team that played at the Anderson facility before it was renovated. And I know many of our elected officials, you know, Ram had a child that was affected with, you know, cognitive and mobility difficulties. And Judge came to do a scrunch, scrunch up thing. He was there playing at a game that day. And after looking into things, you know, this miracle field provides an opportunity for our children and young adults with cognitive and mobility issues to actually enjoy sports. And because several of you have been here for a long time, we were in dire straits ten years ago, we couldn't, we were desperate to just try to keep everything going. And to have come to this day now, to have us actually start the process of putting this field in is just a marvelous thing. So I appreciate your support. I appreciate all of the staff that helped on this Wayne County, who really started the process by giving us this seed money. But we have hoped that this is just phase one because there is a place gate that goes along with the miracle field that hopefully eventually we'll be able to install again. But this is really, really an important move for the city of Southgate to where we will be able to, the first down there, to have a miracle field that does meet the needs of these special children. So again, thank you for your support and thank all of those that work with the every year's budget and saying, do we have it? Do we have it? Do we have it? And unfortunately, with the Wayne County and the Village, the Rec Village, we're able to pull this off. So thank you.
Thank you. Last item is a number from the nation here for running the library policy and procedure 2025 update. Madam Clerk.
The Library Commission approved revisions to the policy and procedure manual on September 10th, 2025, attached to the documents showing the revised sections as well as a draft amendment from the meeting. The administration has reviewed...
What's a part of your counsel?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Eris Reese.
I make a motion that we approve the Southgate Veterans Memorial Library Policy and Procedure Manual revisions approved by the Library Commission on September 10th, 2025.
Support. Motion by Eris Reese, supported by George. Any discussion?
Madam Chair. Councilman George.
I just see that the public knows that there were three changes. One was a donation policy, one was a training policy, and patron behavior policy. A lot of it has to do with cell phone use in the library. They're trying to keep it quiet. I'll go one by one. The donation policy, they are no longer accepting music, CDs, or audio books, but the library won't accept books, hardcover paperback, DVDs, Blu-ray, and video games. And then other materials may be accepted at the discretion of the staff. There is now a designated teen library. Well, it's in the North Carolina Library in the space aside specifically for children, the patrons between ages of 12 and 18. It will be available without reservation for library-sponsored key events and meetings. And here they are asking that they keep the cell phone use quiet and not disturb the others. And then there's a few other things in here, just look at that furniture and on school days, the teen room is open to any patron until 3:00 p.m. and then after that, they're... It's only for the teens. They can talk to 18. And they may, they may must vacate the room after 3:00 p.m. And also, our patron behavior policy, again, it's doing with cell phones. They're trying to keep the library quiet. We did have a resident that came in at the last meeting and he had hearing aids and she was at the computers and she was trying to fill out an application for something and she didn't have hearing aids that, that the information that she needed from her cell phone would go through her hearing aids. It was going through the phone. And so they're asking that even in the computer, you know, to be respectful and if you have to use the computer in that way to do something with your phone, that you need the information from your phone just to keep it quiet. If it's a call that you want to make, you can always go in the west door to make a phone call.
And that's, that's good to change. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One item under Communications A, receiving file. It's an appointment to the board to undertake a motion to receive and file.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Ralph.
I make a motion to receive and file.
Support. Motion by Ralph, reported by Eris Reese. Motion carries. There is no audience service. Any old business the council would like to discuss? Seeing that there is any new business the council would like to discuss. Seeing, um, one, to every person in the audience, if you'd like to address council, come to the podium. Stay in and address in about three minutes.
Madam Chair, before you go on, I don't think they are interested in coming to the podium here, but this is the first time in 16 years that I've had appointments that are on the agenda here where they come to watch, to see the council approve the appointments. So Ray and Ben, if you want, put him for just a moment and acknowledge your assignments have been approved tonight, but it's great to see. I hope this is a coming trend, but this is the first time that's ever happened. And I wanted to acknowledge both of them because it's great that they're volunteering to do, take over these duties for their various appointments.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Seeing, no, seeing no people on the one and twos and a count. Councilman Ralph.
We approve law 1529, the amount of $1,807,283.93.
Support. Motion by Ralph, supported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I make a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair.
Councilman George. I move to adjourn. Motion by Eris Reese, any discussion? Any objection? I adjourn.
Very nice. Support.